Good evening, everyone. Welcome. No one even called the meeting to order at this time. Please turn off cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate at this time. And we do know Simone still have an alarm that will go off. At this time, Mr. Art, please lead us in our current place, sir.
Oh God, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for your many blessings. I pray that you will guide us and all the decisions that we make, they're not being in the best interest of the citizens of Bounder and within your world. Praise is in Jesus and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the government for always its fairness, one of the nation under God, and the citizens with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Art? All right, consider approval of the minutes of the February 21st, 2017 meeting. No, it's such a great one.
Yes.
Darling calling here, she's good.
It's the way he had it. It's Shan- what, Chaney, wasn't it?
Chaney, C I A, Kenyatta.
Yeah, you got a chance. Nobody.
He's looking at her. He wrote that or she wrote that?
My phone is silent.
Hey, how you even said that? Motion to accept the minutes as presented, move with corrections. Second? I'll in favor say aye. All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on the subject at this time. We only see a couple here that might not be on the agenda.
We were supposed to be.
Well, yes, well, you still can't.
We ain't. It's okay. Just wanted to let you know the circus is coming to town. Mr. Grimes, I hope you have taken care of getting permission to use the property.
I just got the phone number this afternoon.
Okay.
I'll make the phone call tomorrow.
Okay. Well, we'll leave that property alone. We need water access out there and dumpsters. They want a dumpster for animal waste. I don't know if you want to put that in the same pipe dumpster. I don't know how they do that.
Okay.
Okay. And they're going to take care of porta-potties, the circus people will. Skeeter and the Coyote is going to be in town next Tuesday afternoon. And it was supposed to be this week before spring break. Didn't happen. So, so on, probably myself and Skeeter will be going around town, just trying to be visible. We're going to visit the two nursing homes. I was supposed to go to the newspaper and to the radio station. They will have a DJ in the afternoon, so we're still trying to work at those details. But the show school for us to visit there and Mother's Day out has the same holidays as the school, so we can't go there. So, uh, we have a list that was given to someone, to someone, to someone, to me, so I'm giving it to you. People are wanting you to put trash cans inside the playground. Maybe the little rolly ones that a trash picket can go out to the big dumpsters.
You talking about?
In the park, in the playground area.
Okay, change subject to us.
Got it, got it.
We're having lots of issues with Sonic Kicks on the ground, cigarette butts on the ground. It just doesn't look very good.
And it's still going to be here, you know, with the trash can? But to make someone happy, we can put trash cans in here?
It's going to help. I mean, it'll help with the plaza when we just put the two in that we have, but we're going to increase that, but still it'll help.
Okay. All right, um, and then I want to know when we're going to repair the streets in the park.
This soon.
Soon.
Within the next few months, they're all down there now. If you'll have a team to work on the park.
Well, this, this list came through a week or maybe two weeks ago now before.
It was already on the list, but it got bumped up because of Atmos not giving us a direct answer on where they're going to start repairs.
Okay. Okay, and at our next to the last meeting, we talked with Cory about maybe someone else was supposed to take care of doing maybe more patrols through the park, maybe on hourly basis. Because there have been incidences that people are kind of leery of. Like people in their twenties climbing out of the tunnels adjusting their clothes and that kind of stuff in the middle of the day.
I mean, I can't do that.
Well, I mean, yeah. And then we talked to Cory also about maybe more lights down there, and I haven't been down there myself at dark.
Or maybe signs?
Signs. Yeah, signage is something we could do. Lights, I've actually went down there because of where I live. I can see all the way to the waterfall from my deck at night. Probably for that back, where my back property line is, probably there's going to be some light, some more lighting there.
I like the way I'm saying that street there.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
It's kind of dark right there.
Right, yeah.
But isn't, isn't the park technically closed to just through traffic excluded? Is that still an ordinance? Okay, now you've got cameras to set that or put.
Yeah, it's closed to through traffic. It's, it's a logistical nightmare to lock it when you got cameras.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's just, um, but we can do some signage, children play, things of that nature.
If you see any suspicious activity, please call 911.
Call 911, yes.
And I'll give you an example of that since, um, Chief R, she's here, I had a lady come to me and said she had taken her grandchildren down there. Apparently she had parked in the center where those parking spaces are. And the next thing she knows, there's two cars parked like this beside each other. And she's two spaces down from one of the cars and she said, "I'm not saying anything criminal is going on." But she said, "The next thing I know, they're in a very heated argument." And she said, "It just did not make me feel comfortable, so tell my grandchildren, can we please go over to the, let's go over to the Indian, let's look at that." And then she said, "By the time they got back, they were gone." But she said, "I didn't feel comfortable going to my car," because she said, "Okay, if this is something I may or may not be supposed to see, what's going to happen if I try to go to my car and leave?" So.
I mean, we need to do that patrol, but I mean, I can do it.
You can be everywhere on the town.
And that's why I'm thinking maybe signage.
Yeah, if you see suspicious activity, call dispatch, call 911, yeah.
The, yes.
As far as the video surveillance that was brought up for having been, it's just not possible to cover that much with one, with one camera.
That's what Cory was telling us. You'd have to have someone sitting watching the cameras, and that's not going to work. So. And to put fake cameras out so they think they're being watched, you know, eventually they catch on to that too.
Right.
Anywhere you want to taste them, that orange side.
That would be a yes. And that was a yes.
Okay, I think that's all we have. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate you.
Do you want to do that before?
Your call.
Done that, done that.
All right, consider approval of building permits?
Okay, David, Melvin Hawke, who wants to do a remodel, uh, one division by 200. Jonathan, uh, Millwood, at the 1800th North 13th, is going to build, wants to build a third by 40, 15-foot detached garage. These back up. And also wants to build a 10 by 20, by 13-foot front porch and a 20 by 20 by 13-foot back porch. Uh, I think we're after. Skip over this, maybe. Edwin Bender, 401 A, a third by 40 by Q, three car garage. Larry Holder, 1608, uh, 21 by 24 by 10-foot carport. Theresa Contreras, 1205 6, a 12 by 24 by 8 room. Ralph and Billy Shaker, uh, 1708 more tent and 25 by 22-foot carport.
Been storing these up?
Big part.
Been storing these up? We get one, we get three, and then all of a sudden she says, "Hey, what's up, man?"
Bounder Hospital wants to lose, sorry.
Yeah, that's why.
They're going to remodel on the. They're going to be there a while.
Paul Long?
Paul Long, from that?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve building permits as presented.
Second?
Second.
I'll in favor say aye. All right, discuss and take action from the Pioneer and zoning boards. Recommendation on the variance request from John and Terry Cuellar, 306 8, North 8, Block 9, Block 106, First Road Edition, and Morrow Movie Company, 718 Hutchings Avenue, Lot 15, Block 8, Original Edition. Do you have any comments on those, Mr. Nixon?
Uh, yeah, we took the floor P and Z and, uh, P and Z was concerned about the width. Uh, beginning into the, uh, the, uh, too close to the setback on the neighbor's property. That was our real concern. So they rejected it.
Was there anything back from the neighbors that they?
No.
Had a problem with it?
No, had no comments one way or the other.
I spoke with the neighbor, uh, this afternoon. She is, uh, no problem with, um, she didn't have a problem with where it is now. And I believe Gay talked to us last time about doing a two and a half foot setback, uh, along that property line, correct, Gay?
If it was okay to leave it the width, it would leave it okay. Two and a half feet would be the minimum I could come in. I would prefer to leave it where it's at. I definitely will take those front legs back just to fit my, uh, vehicle under there and match up with the front porch.
Did the P and Z hear it if he was willing to take it in?
No. No.
I think it's somewhere between zero and two and a half feet that we can talk about it, or does it have to be zero or two and a half feet?
It can be whatever council wants it to be. I mean, this is, you're the final voice on this. This is your permit. So you can say it's five feet, you can say it's two and a half feet, you can say it's three and a half feet.
Sam, I have a problem going against P and Z.
Do I?
I have a problem going against P and Z on recommendation. But if you can move it back four, two and a half, or whatever, a little more. Is this house next to it for sale?
Yes, sir.
So, so a new owner may have an issue. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, potentially, yes, they could. I think the person selling the property probably hasn't figured staying in it for the potential new owner. I mean, if they were closing tomorrow, they'd know.
It affects the market, I think.
Yeah.
But if you look back there along that line, those two buildings are on that property line.
Yeah, they're there anyway. You already have two structures that are already there, that are already on the property line from previous. Yeah. New rules come into effect now, trying to enforce the new rules. That's going to look a little odd to bring that in, either two and a half or five feet. And then you have the building sitting back there on the property line. I mean, I agree with what we had said at the last meeting, let's take the front poles, move them back, do the porch. But as far as having to move the ones that are directly there on the property line, I'm having a hard time with it just basically because it has two buildings sitting side by side directly there on the property line previously. Now, if those two buildings weren't there, or one of the buildings wasn't there, I probably wouldn't feel that way. But because that was already done in that addition from previous, I mean, they both have a piece of property sitting at the back of their properties side by side. Is there any separation between the two? None?
Well, if you'll call it a four inch.
Well, they were built right next to each other. I mean, they're not.
Well, actually, that back one on the back, back side, that's actually the wall or fence to my yard.
Okay.
Their wall is my enclosure.
Okay.
I wish, wish we would have proposed that to P and Z, taking that wall in.
Go ahead.
Taking that wall in.
Take the which wall to?
Two and a half feet. Wall, even a foot.
I'd say it's a foot.
You know?
Yeah.
But that's still a thing.
Melissa indicated, and Steve, P and Z didn't have a problem if they moved it back. It was never considered as, as far as on the variance itself, right? Were, were, were those discussions with P and Z as far as?
Last, the five foot setback.
They were, they were wanting to adhere to the five foot setback strictly.
So he can't have a front porch at all, is what you're saying?
No, he can't have a driveway. Couldn't have the porch, but then he doesn't have the driveway.
Really, the driveway? Well, when I thought the porch also was in some step back.
Well, no, it's the car, just the carport.
Just the carport. The porch is going to be right there on the front and then coming out to the carport.
Well, but I thought we said last time that the porch stuck out into the roadway.
Well, the front, the front half of the carport would have to come off back to the center leg. You're not really getting?
Well, that's, that's beyond where the porch is going to be, is what I'm saying.
Can I see this?
I have pictures here.
The front porch will actually just come out the front of the house about six feet.
Right, that six feet is in front of the back legs, is what it looks like up there.
It's in front of the middle legs.
Yeah, it's in between those two.
Yes, and I'm going to take those front legs all the way off until that front porch, straight across. I'd like to be able to walk from my front porch down to my.
That's what I'm saying. The issue is, is if you have to take the carport back to the house, basically, is what it looks like to me, you're going to have the porch six foot out, and I thought that's what the setback was. I thought we had a setback issue making that porch six foot out, coming from the curb. Coming from the curb.
Yeah, but he's going to, he's going to take that, those front legs back to where the center legs are, is that right?
Well, no.
Well, there's going to be about, from where that middle pole is, it's still like, I don't know, two feet towards the house or towards the back. And it'll be like four feet that it'll stick out past that middle leg right there.
See, you need four feet from that middle leg so you can walk from the porch into the carport.
But the width is the main concern. I mean, if we can't do the porch, then we can't do the porch. My main concern is the vehicle being covered. Anything more than, you know, two and a half feet is banging the doors up against the, the sides, but, uh, I guess again, it would be at least covered. Everybody would have to get out on one side.
I'm going to talk about this in P and Z.
Did you make the P and Z meeting?
I didn't.
Steve?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you make the P and Z meeting that this was held at? That this was discussed at?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if you were there.
Yes, yes. Outside of just the general ruling, was there any, what were the discussions as far as this? Was it solid and firm, we're going to adhere to the zoning, or is it, was there some leeway?
Yeah, it was, it was very well, they wanted to stick with the five foot.
Five foot from the middle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Puts it right in the middle of the tailgate. Yeah, puts it right in the middle of their own building. That just, that makes sense. I can understand as far as new build, new, new, uh, structures or anything, but when you have two buildings sitting side by side like that, that just.
Can I add something?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take it for you for, you know, take it in consideration that there was several people that told me, uh, just essentially that it's easier to go ask for forgiveness than just permission. My wife and I being that, for truth, trying to do the right thing and, you know, adhere to the codes that y'all set forth through the city. But, uh, I just feel like that we're just, that's the only reason we're here, just trying to do the right thing.
Well, that you're trying to do the right thing, I mean, the, the first part was we didn't, I mean, you already stated the fact that you didn't get a permit at the beginning, which we understand that, but, um, you'd be in a whole lot worse if you had finished it and then we had to move it or else just say, take it out.
Right, right, and that's, and that's why, again, you know, that's why I didn't listen to what others were telling me to do, you know.
You have a contractor, right?
Yes, sir.
He didn't, uh, turn out for a minute for us?
Yeah, he's from Miles, and Miles, they don't have to have a permit for carports.
Well, I know at the last meeting, we basically said I had to go P and Z and.
Yes.
Sir?
Sir.
And Mr. Cuellar did present the fact that he is going to move those two poles at the sidewalk back forward. Uh, the big concern was still the property line, but I've already said what I see there and what I understand there. I mean, still, the buildings weren't there and you could go one way or the other, but you're on the property line, you have two structures back there. I think it's going to be really weird. Even if your neighbor wants to put up a fence, now they have to be setback five foot, that'd be right in the center of their building.
And they really don't use that part of the driveway. You notice there's a porch towards the back. They go all the way in there and get out their car.
Yeah, I understand our setback codes. I understand, you know, those things, but I think these actual structures were built before those codes.
Yeah, actually, the, that, that house, Gay's house there?
Yes, sir.
And probably all those up and down that block, all those houses are inside the setback.
Correct. Yeah, we had talked about that at the last meeting where.
And that's not the biggest street in Bounder, short of, you know?
Yeah, right.
Which makes no sense. It's just the widest street ever.
It is. We're going to pave it. It's going to be, it's every bit of eighty feet.
Actually, the way the people park the first act is sort of you need to be that wide. If y'all were ever putting down there.
Is that a confession?
I don't park there. I park in the parking lot just because I'm afraid of it.
The neighbor, for whatever it's worth, the neighbor had no issues with it. We talked, um, uh, this afternoon. She was okay with it. At one point, she thought we were going to let him come onto her property, and no, I was out the case. And she was fine with it. What she didn't want, and I think you, you've said you're not going to come all the way down, you're going to go partially down. Yes, sir. Down on the side. Well, you're.
Oh, you're talking about she.
Yes.
I have no problem with you. I need to go against P and Z, but, but I also, I'm struggling with. I mean, so basically, what we're telling the homeowner is you'll never be able to build a garage, ever. Either side, either one of them.
Right.
Well, I will not go against P and Z. Uh, so I'm sure I'll be in the minority, but, uh, I wish they had been presented with some other scenarios here, like a two and a half. That's the only thing I'm looking. You know, I would certainly go with that. I won't go against P and Z.
So, so just so I'm clear, because I'm a little bit slow. Everything, not just today. Is P and Z here that we could take that in two and a half feet, or do they not hear that?
Can I say something? I'm on the P and Z. Why can't we go back to another meeting with all the information that he's willing to move it in two and a half feet?
I'm glad you said that because I was fixing to ask.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to be nonpartially, but, and as far as the buildings in the back, those would be grandfathered in, I would think. Yes, Steve?
Yes.
Well, the buildings are grandfathered in, so why would the property line not be grandfathered in?
But I'm on the P and Z, and we were not given the information that he was willing to move it in two and a half feet.
Right.
So why can't we do, why can't we do another P and Z meeting and with all the information and see what comes of that one?
That sound, could you do that pretty quick, because this man's in a bind.
I'm telling you. I'm telling, and I feel for you, but I, like I said, I'm like you. I don't want to go against because I'm on that board.
Well, I won't move it.
And I would gladly be there. I was just told to be at the last council meeting that I was at and this meeting.
So no one told you about the P and Z?
I sent, I sent you a letter.
But then I called you on the phone and you told me, you said, "No, you need to be at the council meeting. The P and Z, they'll discuss if."
I mean, do what you want, but I think it should go back to the P and Z with all the information.
That's right. So if you're going to P and Z, y'all need 72 hours to meet. Y'all can meet Friday if you need to, or Thursday at 6 o'clock if we call it, post it right now. So y'all can meet Friday if you wanted to, and then we can have it on the agenda for the 20th at the latest.
We're not politics, but the delay, we're just trying to.
Oh, I mean, I'm.
Because the problem is, if we set a precedent of going against P and Z, then everybody's going to have that expectation, and there's sometimes we just don't, you know.
Well, at that point, what's the purpose of the P and Z?
There you go. That's right.
I, I probably understand. I'm at Charles Mercury. I just.
Well, that's, that, don't say that.
Probably, I mean, but I am, but I mean, like you just said, you know, you basically tell me if I don't move it in two and a half feet, I'll never be able to.
Well, not, you know, we're trying to solve the issue of people building without permits, but when the hospital account does it, it's kind of hard to get really upset about it. So, you know, we're going to try to get a little more teeth in this thing, but, but, you know, we want to help you.
Well, I was going to buy the property, that little piece, that little piece of property, I was going to sell it, have her sell it to me and then sell it back to her once it was built, so.
Actually, if you could just put, cover that whole carport.
Well, and that's what I thought.
Bonus.
I thought, I thought about that as well. I was like, well, I'll just cover her car too, but again, they don't use that piece of the driveway. Theirs is.
In the back.
In the back. Or yeah, that would have been another four foot just to follow that slant into her yard. I mean, I'd love to do that.
What happens if the new one's there? By the time we get around it, you might have an older.
If I buy, whoever, whoever buys the next house and that is already built, I think they're buying it with the knowledge of, hey, there's a carport right here.
That's a lean fit.
You know, and so there wasn't any water runoff into that yard. We were going to put a gutter system that would lead back towards our yard.
Okay, you need a second one here? How about, you're going to refer it back to P and Z for further consideration?
Yes.
And then, um, y'all can get with, Melissa will get with you. The earliest you can meet would be Friday. Anytime next week is fine. I would recommend you have, I'd recommend you meet by Wednesday so we can get an agenda item for the 20th. Yes, is that a yes? Okay, just checking.
Is there any, is this in case?
Yes, sir.
To move those legs that are right there by the house, if I'm touching my house, is that a whole nother issue? I might have this building to my little boy's bedroom, about to go, five feet in that way.
Do you have enough space there, because I think we had enough space.
Yeah, and then I have to move him around, because he'd sneak out through the garage, which is old enough.
Yeah, believe me.
Especially if, like, I follow him in clothes, and he's at the window, and free the bird.
Somebody motion, get this, uh, get this, motion, uh, Quayhart's back to planning zone.
Second?
Second please.
Okay, we say hi. All right, let's move on to Amero Movie Company. What is the?
Uh, yeah, that, that was, uh, a lady who wanted to buy that building, and she was wanting to, uh, uh, build a living quarter on top. And I think it's gonna turn out to be a non-issue, because, uh, I, I could've swore that I saw in our home book that we weren't allowed to do that in town, but I cannot find it anywhere.
Okay.
I might've been reading that, uh, so, it's, it's more left, I like, a non-issue.
Which building is this? I thought this was where Home Health purchased.
It's, uh, Well, it's my building.
Okay, okay, I'm a block, I was a block up, I'm sorry. It says Amero Movie Company, so I thought that was the L T and T building.
So I had to lift the wrong car.
Wrong car.
Yeah.
And, and we, I did say, I follow up and say, too, there is nothing on point against someone living upstairs.
Cool.
So.
Lots of people doing, I mean, they were written that out over there across the street.
I lived in the top of the Dallinger building for a while. And that's Maro, isn't it?
Maro, 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 I thought it was in Maro.
Does the home market, does it change now?
I, I wouldn't say.
Yes.
You really? Check on my daybook.
Is this a variance, is this just an ongoing, is this just giving permission to do so?
I, I, they were wanting to make sure that she could do it, that she could limit it.
Okay.
And as I said, I think it's a non-issue, I believe she can.
But also, they're gonna issue the P and Z?
I don't like, they really had one.
There's no issue?
Yeah, as you know, there's, didn't come before y'all.
It did, again, because there's so many people that are living in backup or on top of their businesses already, you can't, in my opinion, which is always great, ask anybody, deny that unless you go and enforce it statewide and make everyone get out of the businesses. That's just me, we did not have a problem with it, and that's fair.
I'm making a question to prove that there is a request from Maro, Maro, or Maro, I think it's Maro.
Second? All the papers are, all right, thank you.
Awesome.
All right, discuss and take action on the request from Sammy Kellamire from the city to assist in paying for a fence between his property and the city's, uh, property. Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you.
The red line is, is a good indication of where, uh, Mr. Kellamire would like us to help pay for a fence.
All right.
He, uh, he's called me last couple of weeks, apparently our tenant, Mr. Otto, uh, top, that's what's in the name, has cows that like to wander, and they have wandered over into Mr. Kellamire's property from time to time.
Last week, that's, you know, uh, when I brought, when I had this brought to my attention again last week, I asked that question, and the response was, it's the neighborly thing to do. Well, yeah, that's, we're in really good places with that.
Um, staff does not think it's needed, we don't need to pay for it, I'm of the opinion of that. I did tell Mr. Kellamire I would bring this to the attention of the city council, and, and do as the council wishes.
Sounds like a lot of us continue to run cattle, where you're gonna find a micred line. Well, there's a fence there already.
Well, yeah, unless they take it down, there's already a fence there.
Wow. Uh, yes, sir.
Texas is an open range state, I do believe, so the only reason why you'd fence is to keep somebody out. That's the rule I've heard. So, if he wants to keep somebody out, it's his fence.
Well, there's acres and acres of New Mexico land where they just have one wire running across there, and the cows are smarter, they don't want that one. It's a pretty cheap thing to do, if you wanna keep something out.
Yeah. For the record, the cost is three thousand dollars. That would be our cost to the project.
Well, three thousand dollars this year, and then just maintain it for the rest of your natural-
No, is that you're falling down, you're precedent.
You will get no argument from me, I'm just bringing this to you because I know it'll be accusing-
I'm ready for a mo.
Sure.
I'm ready to deny Mr. Kellamire for questioning, she needs to say, of course, she'd fence her, or a fence.
Second?
My second.
All the papers are, all right. Thank you, sir. All right, here's the police activity, let them report from Chief Stannler. Thank you, Bob. Perfect, perfect.
Okay. Uh, I've already told them, uh, I'm gonna sit this, you wanna read this here? I don't know if I'm working this way. Um, we have seventy-four citations, over eight thousand dollars in court files. A lot of that is because of people worried about getting on, oh, aren't this, this supposed to be in the newspaper? So they all say, hey, we can pay her fine, so, uh-
So we do that more often?
Yeah, we do, definitely. Um, again, my knowledge is messed up again, so, but it's a short amount, you know, we don't have a whole lot going on. Couple of things, update on Anthony Hirsch and the academy, um, if he cannot attend the academy, he will not graduate. Uh, simply for hands-on reasons, we're gonna allow him to bond training in the academy that he's been missed, and so therefore, with the agreement of the academy, and Anthony knows this already too, that he will not graduate in May, uh, the academy will refund our money, or hold on to it for next year if Anthony is able to attend. So if not, then they'll refund that money to us. Um, and as some of you may know, Sam backs it out with a back injury, um, it's still unknown when he's gonna be back. Personally, he had an appointment with a surgeon, not saying that it's surgical, but they referred him to a back specialist to figure out what the problem is. So, uh, got the runaround through Sam, saying either it's a herniated disc or a pensioner. So, we don't know yet.
It's a pretty big swing.
Yeah. Um, the fundraiser for Anthony Hirsch, the raffle tickets were raised over forty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, a couple local winners, and I think there's only one winner out of San Antonio that won this, so, everybody else is local. So, um, that money will be put into his account, uh, tomorrow, actually. Update on all the trainees, Officer Torres has graduated the F D O program, and it's on her own. So, don't give her too much slack. Officer Mercer and Aunt Amaro, they're on their last leg. Chad is with me, uh, for the next couple of weeks, her mind grave, will depend on whether or not he gets on his own too, same way with Justin. So, um, we do have an active arson case, um, sometime last week, there was a porch fire, house fire on Eighth Street, I think it was Eighth Street.
Yep.
Yeah. The person in the house said she claimed to have, uh, people talking outside her window, next thing she knew, her porch was on fire. Luckily for us, we had fire extinguishers installed into our patrol cars, and we got the extinguisher for the whole house went out. So, uh, we don't have any leads on it, but, you know, it's actively open, I mean, arson, you don't hear every day, so I figured they might bring that up. So, um, other than that, I think that's it.
First, Stan, I guess I have some subliminal reason for asking this, has the chief's position been decided in March?
No, um, I know there's been different applicants, and I do, I do know that they're meeting tonight, I do believe.
Oh.
And whether or not they're gonna decide tonight or keep it open longer, but I have not heard on a definite yes or no, who's gonna be it, so.
So Stan, I need educating on this, I see reckless drivers and sex offenders and harassment, family violence, but there's always a zero under arrest, maybe?
Yeah, I don't know, um, a lot of the times, um, Martha doesn't, I'm still training Martha on this stuff.
Oh, okay.
And a lot of times is, we have to go look through the reports, okay, arrests were made, so we market.
But there are arrests?
Yes, there are arrests, so, um, I know there's been, I can probably count a dozen right now of arrests in February, so, I mean-
That's a zero.
Yeah, it's, um, it's a training curve.
Learning curve.
Yeah.
Well, again, a weekly report, if they're compiled, you just wanna do one and do the compile?
Yeah, um, that's another-
Okay, I'm just asking, she just prints it all out, so there, and then sometime, let it catch it sometime, but it'll-
That might shorten the prep time, just to-
But it's shortening the prep time, and then when you look at a report, you're not gonna see all zeros, like, the first page of it, what's this?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
Oh, good stuff. Anybody have any questions?
Um, I wanna ask for a budget line to remove boxes, maybe, sir?
For doing what? For moving boxes?
No, that's a friendly jam, I'd say, man.
A budget for, uh, building process?
Do you need a building permit?
Sure.
Why the bother?
Please give one before you start, and remember, you know?
Yeah, that's cool.
Well, I was sure we tried to take some of it down.
Well, I mean, it just amazed me, you know, but, but I think most people, Gabe was honest, I think most people just start building, and they get those sexual forgiveness.
Oh, yeah, I've had-
But there's no, there's no teeth in that, though, we want honest people.
Right.
Yeah. I had to stop at several of them that started.
Well, the hospital, they're involved in that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that was actually put in for, I don't remember what the date exactly was, but-
Oh, those papers have been out there for a long time.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it wasn't-
Had they been doing construction, or they just doing demolition? Basically, it was a roofing company that did not cover up before two big rains.
Yeah, they actually put in for, set up the framework.
Yeah, it was damaged from the rains, and so that company came in within two weeks, and just set up, because it was an emergency repair, and it has grown.
The Philly people are a new progression, good in my thinking about building permits, because historically, they've
Yeah.
Kinda been getting, giving a little slack, you know, so I think this is good.
Yeah.
The, the direction we're going on this.
And, and honestly, sometimes you're taking it, right, I'm, I'm just gonna put a carport up, and it's no big deal, well, it is a big deal, right, I mean, you got, you got it.
Well, like a turning door.
Yeah.
Changing your flat, changing your survey.
I know that, you know, there's, it's not only a, there's several streets in town where those houses are built in through the setback. You know?
Is that because they were built before we had the rules of a setback?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So it wasn't technically their fault when they built them, it just happened to be?
What I wonder about is why, I mean, this is just theoretical, but on Eighth Street, why do you need a setback? I mean, that street is, I don't know how wide.
It's eighty feet, it's eighty feet wide.
And, and why do you need an additional twenty-foot setback on each side? I mean, what could, I mean, tanks could go down.
Tanks can do that.
But then you go to a more narrow street, and they're fine. You'd think on a wider street, you'd need less setback.
Yeah, but Stan, if that particular carport is on the corner up there.
Well, that's not a corner.
No, that would not work at all, so it's, it's the same deal, look.
That doesn't work, but like, like you do-
I mean, because it's blind your view pulling out, you know?
Right. Yeah.
Regardless of the width of the street.
Like those pecan trees at the corner of the park that's over there. I swear I'm gonna bring my loppers. I'm gonna take them out.
We just need Rudy off the back of that. Remember?
The water crew took care of some of that last week. The water guys took care of some of those trees last week, they weren't nowhere.
What else?
Because Robert just takes the back post, starts trimming.
I don't think it's a sediation, really.
A setback?
No.
Okay.
But I just don't understand the whole setback thing. No, I mean, not for like, because I swear, we said, if you, if you make a six-foot porch off the front door of that house, that's in the setback.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And that just makes no sense that you can't put a front porch.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's patterned after the state law, especially in the R one.
Mm-hmm.
You know, well, I guess all setbacks are the same, but, you know, it may be patterned after state law.
But, you know, all the nice houses are gonna meet it, because they're set way bad, you know, pretty much. It's all those little houses that they put there on the hill, and on further down, that aren't connected, they're never gonna meet it.
Good.
Yeah, just talk to them.
All right, here's the city administrator, file a weekly report, please. Do you have your, uh, financials for the period ending February twenty-eighth of, uh, twenty seventeen? Um, we're doing very well, um, we are, we still need about another ninety or eighty thousand to go in, um, property tax, and so that'll start trickling in periodically over the, over the next couple of months. Our sales tax is up about sixty thousand from this time last year, and we are halfway to our goal of a million dollars, so the businesses are doing well. Um, hotel motel tax is up, it's doing well. Um, let's see, just a couple of other things. If you notice, I wanted to bring something to your attention, if you struggle with this, you'll see it, um, police department expenditure, you'll see the chief's position is, uh, being fairly accelerated compared to last year, but if you look at where the sergeant's number is, it's fairly down, and so, um, basically, what we're doing is, we're just staying out of the chief's position, and we're not really putting anything, taking anything out of the sergeant's position. And so, those two numbers will mesh out in the year. Uh, fire station and police, um, they put new doors on the fire station, and so that's why you see that increase there, uh, of ten thousand dollars. They'll end up coming out a different look, that's what this code is, what it is.
Yeah.
Um, should've been a bill of payments. Um, let's see here, a couple of other things. Overall, our general fund, uh, we're up three fifty-five, six nineteen, if you look at where we were last year on Y T G, we were up seven thirty, but if you remember, three hundred fifteen thousand was the grant funds that we received in February, so that would, that would make three, despite. Uh, waterfront's doing well. Um, it is up, no, no, I don't remember both of it, it's up two twenty-six, four sixty, one of the things I found, uh, that we discovered on Friday evening, um, I was at the track meet, watching my daughter get first place in the volleyball. Well, there. And, and watching, uh, Phillip's daughter do very, very well. Clear the, actually clear the hire, anyway. Um, but I got a phone call from Carolina Tolliver, that, and there's a fifty, or not fifty, a twenty-foot geyser, uh, shooting up over by the Ag Barn, in Southern School at a water leak. So, when we went to, there is one meter into the school, and that's it, so if there's a water leak anywhere at the school, we have to turn the water off- So if there's a water leak anywhere at the school, we have to turn the water off in the entire complex, junior high, high school, ag, everything. There is no isolation or shut off valves that we know of, and the school didn't know anything. So, we go out there and turn the main line off, and we notice that the meter is not spinning. That's bad news, that means they've been getting free water for a number of years, or months, or whatever. And so, we are now going to replace that, uh, old meter, that, that old four inch meter with the new four inch meter, it was on schedule to be replaced with the other meters, um, but, you know, if you get the four inch meter was, um, we wouldn't get all the other ones in first.
Have they just been receiving minimum bills, or?
They've been receiving, they've been receiving minimal bills, it's just not reading as much. Anything below ten thou, or is it ten GPM? Anything below a certain GPM, it doesn't register, so like, when they take showers, it would register. If everybody went to the bathroom at the same time, as they typically do, and flush the commotes, it's, it'll register. So it's, it's not like we're losing a whole lot of money on it, but we're not doing it sure accurate for meeting a meeting. And so that belief that they had the other day was not enough to warrant that register spin, that meter spinning. We have, uh, uh, ready that issue we were doing here this morning, and, uh, we expect it to get here in the next two weeks.
Two months of money lost depends on how old the figures have been worth.
That's true, and you don't know when that exact date is, so it's kinda hard to tell. Um, overall, we are expenditure, revenues over expenditures, five ninety-four, nine ninety-four, so we're up almost six hundred thousand. And we're spending a lot of expenditure. Um, we have a meeting on Monday, or excuse me, on Thursday afternoon, to go over, uh, some airport improvements, um, we may be looking in to do some T hangars, uh, and some additions out there, um, and I think some of those additions, some of those recommendations will be brought up in the audit as well, and so, uh, uh, we talked about the gas, um, gas pumps, sorry, the automated gas pumps, great parts, talked about doing that. Um, some suggestions that, that people maybe even passed about bathrooms probably need to be upgraded, so on and so forth, and so, um, we're seeing a lot of demand, um, at the airport. We also have a waiting list for people to hang, to put, uh, planes in, going back two years. And so, uh, currently, the rent is sixty-five dollars, I don't know, uh, if we can keep it at sixty-five dollars with the increases, with the, with the additions, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. Um, we have another fundraiser for Anthony Hurst on April the second, we're doing drive-bys at Fajitas, or, pardon, sorry. Drive-by, yeah.
Just trying to make it clear.
We're a real topic, Sam. If you catch it, it's free, if not, it's twenty bucks. Um, um, I'll get that to the next camera, that's the next agenda item. Um, the next two are interrelated, uh, street paving, we are, um, we received a number of complaints along Eighth Street. We are going to, uh, patch those taps, and right now, um, uh, we will end up looping Eighth Street and have one cross and then come back up. And so we don't have thirty across that street. And we'll loop it and come back up, and, and that's how we'll, we'll take care of those issues, but in the meantime, on, uh, by McKinnon in Bowman, and is that the, is that the south side of Eighth Street, or the?
Yeah, southeast or.
Well, that, if you're going down this way, it's the opposite of the Baptist Church, right there, we're gonna, we're gonna repair all those dishes. Um, we're cutting the pavement, filling it back in with bays, rolling it, putting black cotton, rolling it. And so it's a tedious process, but.
Is that what's down the gas lines there?
There are no gas lines there. Which, which is a nice segue into, well, and we're gonna finish the park, because we know for sure there's no gas lines down there. Um, the day after, we had our council meeting, I met with Admas. Um, the two-year project has now turned into a seven-year project. And, um, we have a map of where they say the steel lines are, but we question the validity of that map, because we know that there's steel lines that, that are, that's, we, we've seen them, we've cut them, but it's not on their map that they provided us. So, the strategy right now is to, for this year, do those places we know for certain are not, uh, there's no gas lines at, the park is one of them, um, a couple of blocks off of Broadway, over by Sergeant, um, Largent, is that the other one?
Sharp.
Sharp. Um, we'll do some, we're coming off a couple of blocks, probably to Fifth Street, where we know there's a gas line. Um, and then we're gonna try to go down, is it Third Street? By your house. Um, from the Duck Pond to the community center. And do some of those repairs as well. And we know that that's gonna have minimal interruptions. Um, Admas is supposed to give me a better updated map. They wanna start as early as July, which means they'll probably start later that. So. And that is, uh, well, and we do not have an executive session tonight, um, Ed called me about three o'clock and said that he had group canal today, and so he is, uh, not with us at the moment. And so, um, tomorrow, um, we have some meetings, uh, to discuss some water projects. Um, if you look forward, um, in April, on the fifth, sixth, and seventh, I think O'Nita and a few others are gonna go to Dallas for a user conference for USDI. And then towards the end of the month, the twenty-third through the twenty-sixth, there is a, a meeting in Phoenix on the meters that we just bought. And so, um, I think myself and Cloud are probably gonna go to that meeting. Um, one other thing, I've been getting inundated with it, um, um, Senate Bill Two, so Stan, when you get your thing from the Chiefs of Police Association, just, you know, I already talked to you about it. Uh, 'cause Brad Allen came to me with it today, um, Senate Bill Two, there's gonna be a hearing next Tuesday. What it does is it artificially caps our tax rate at four percent. And so what it says is, we can't go up above four percent on our admirarial in any given year. And while fundamentally that sounds great, um, it really infringes the city's ability to generate revenue. As.
Do we think the bill has left?
I don't think, I think it has legs and sent. I think the house, not the house. I think what you'll see, and Darby is on Ways and Means, and that's where it's gonna go to in the House. Um, the indications are that the House will produce a bill that's gonna be about a six percent, seven, eight percent increase. Without a petition, that's the key. That's the key. And so, um, that seemed to be what most of my afternoon was about, and so everybody got Senate Bill Two. Um, anyway, that's what I got, everything okay, any questions or comments or concerns?
Ryan, this forty, under expenditures, this forty thousand dollar dispatch, can't desert the county.
Yes, sir.
Will that ever be altered anyway because of cops sink, or will that always be?
They, what's our, we basically write them a check of forty grand, pretty much pays for a dispatch officer.
Yes.
Um, cops.
Probably two and a half, or one and a half.
How, uh, copsing has, potentially will have some dispatching capabilities to it, but when you hit, someone's still gonna call nine-one-one, someone's still gonna call, you know, in the park, the, you know. They're still gonna call a general number, not gonna be able to call Stan's cell phone.
So that forty thousand is going into someone's salary, is it?
Yes. Yes. Yes, sir. It's a great contribution to the sheriff's office. And that number's gone up, like, years since I've been here. And I anticipate it'll, it'll go up again next year.
I mean, then we'll have to consider, at some point in time, the cops, copsing. Is, does, the thing is gonna be, and that price keep going up, we'll have to consider, well, what costs for us to even ourselves.
Is the juice worth the squeeze?
Right.
Yeah.
And so, it could just be it.
Um, a couple of follow-ups, the couple that was talking about, uh, one or two strong. Um, I would, I drove down there and I took Bob with me. That flooding area seems to be more or less on their property and not in our street.
You can't fix it, it's gonna be very difficult.
Unless we just.
You can't even go for that sort of basically flat country.
You can put cans in all, all you want, and all you're gonna do is send the water from one side of the street to the other.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to cut, you'd have to cut bigger plums of it up.
Yeah. Um, and, and, and we can lay some of that out and, and help it out, but, you know, it's just gonna come back and happen again. Um, but I did wanna let y'all know we did follow up on that. Um, or something else that there is. So.
And the county's ever increased their contribution to, to a firefighting, it could go to shoot ten thousand or whatever?
They did twenty thousand in twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen, but.
One year, I don't know what it was.
They did, they did.
What is it now?
Ten thousand.
Oh, yeah, ten.
They did twenty thousand one year, um, and then they cut it back to ten. Um, I think they got some sort of funding through the park service or force service for fire departments, and they just kinda diluted it out equally. But, uh, by and large, um, they'll, they'll save ten thousand or less, I don't know, because it's obviously been going up.
It was seventy-five, shouldn't have prepared fires throughout the county, is that correct?
Yes, sir, about that much. And with days like today, uh, you know, um, wild grass fire can, can happen at any point, any point in time, and, um, we've been pretty consistent as a city to not tell our fire department, don't go put the fire out, just 'cause they don't live in town.
Right.
But, uh, but, uh, that, that's being funded by the taxpayer, it's valid.
Which, I mean, that's a shared deal, right, I mean, grass fire wouldn't walk in town.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's a, yeah. But it's a, it's a shared experience, but it's moving into town.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're providing the salaries, the equipment. Um, we, we spend a hundred and thirty thousand a year on the fire department, they spend ten.
And that's probably true for every volunteer fire department in the county, forever so.
Yeah.
Yeah. That makes you.
Yeah, I, we have, well, no.
If they get ten thousand, everybody's.
Uh, I don't think winners, I, I think their fire department goes probably around fifty, if I was guessing. Miles is probably less than that.
They give real money for that?
Uh, they do give real money.
Ryan, rent money for air, for improvements?
Yes, sir, there are, there is some through tech stock, and, uh, I'm looking into it. Uh, we'll have to figure out how to make it a safety issue.
Of course, we just told him to be stopped on that street.
Well, you know.
Hopefully, it's a different division.
No.
Where'd you run on sixty-five, huh?
Sorry?
Where'd you shoot around on sixty-five?
That's maybe even behind the gas though, I mean, that's, that's the thing I think we need to look at here.
Well, we need to check with other airports around, 'cause I think we're low, I mean, even if we.
I think sixty-five is low.
Yeah, if we bump it to a hundred, hundred fifty, I don't think we're gonna get a lot of complaints.
Right.
You know, and you gotta look at that, are we up to date?
Well, we weren't, we weren't really retaining that much, I bet, but now we're gonna add all these other hangers.
Yes, we're gonna add hangers at fuel, yes.
This is then all of a sudden, we need to, we need to pay for that, we do the bathrooms.
So Brian, each one of those T hangars, is there electricity?
But.
Well, I think there is, I think there's one light.
That's about.
In, uh, in any corner.
Not water.
In like a.
Not water?
No, no.
Well, we can run electricity fairly easily, I mean, it's out there, and you can just.
I just wonder if there's, if clue was paying for that, but as if it's one light.
Yeah. If it's a hundred watt bulb.
And you get squirted.
Yeah.
Just tell you how funny it started, but the airport had a supplier, he said, I'm gonna come see you on Thursday, but I had no idea he was flying. I thought he was driving. And so, he flies into the airport in this big old jet, and just so happens to bring his home for lunch. And he goes, can I help you? And he goes, you know, we need to get the boundary, 'cause he has Verizon, so no cell phone service. He's stuck at the airport, they catch a radical brat, when he lived out there, into Mueller, and he drops him off, I'm like, flew to the airport.
Well, as crazy as that, this sounds, is if we're gonna really do some of these improvements, put a headphone out there. Because you're right, if, if you have Sprint, you have Verizon, you're not gonna get a, I'm barely gonna say, whatever reason, I, I, I guess aliens in Area Fifty-One put a vortex on Bruce Field, um, but you can't get a cell phone signal out there, so just.
With, with, some kind of communication.
Hotline to, to Phillip, or. Get Uber service, that's what we'll do, we'll do Uber.
No, just do a hotline directly to the, uh, dispatch, and then that, what's your name? Go sit here, please, Barbara, Sarah, Barbara, Fire Department.
We'll get a forty thousand out of something.
Oh, well.
No, no executives, um, uh, today, obviously, but, um, we have some meetings tomorrow that are pretty crucial.
Good.
All right.
Yes.
I don't want to continue, I don't want to touch, you know, it's twenty bucks.
Wait, 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 wait a second. Um, but I do have something on the next, um, so.
Okay. Here, request from future general office and city council.
Anybody got anything for, okay. Um, I was approached, uh, by a number of people over the weekend that would like to help and, and actually do some improvements to the Indian field. Um, there is a shortage of fields for certain baseball teams and facilities, Elliott was one of Saturday. Um, and so, um, I think we'll see Justin Viszolai, or Elliott, and a couple of others come on the twentieth and, and present a proposal. Um, Steve, can we, that wood gate in the far left field corner is open. Can we take another section of that fence out so that, that they could get some equipment in there to spray or whatever, if they need to? I think the gist of it's gonna be, they would offer to, to spray it and do some things, if we could come in and, and, uh, blade it and, you know, basically do what we do anyway.
Who, who was here when we did that in the other, little, little guy's? 'Cause I, I don't have the impression most of that was donated.
You mean the time, the labor and stuff?
Yeah, all the stains and.
I can't even play that. I will tell you.
Yeah, I think we need to help, I'm just a little bit nervous about, if it turns into a city project to put a field in it, and then you get soccer that gets upset, and then you, that they think the city ought to do more, I mean.
Well, you're the manager, you have to balance all that.
Yeah, right.
I need to set a precedent.
Well, if it's gonna come down to where they're trying to combine everything, we're not gonna be dealing with all the different entities, we should be dealing with the one entity.
In the old days, if you did something for baseball and not softball, you'd host in the front. Right, 'cause last time I heard, which I'd be rid of the softball field, right?
Yeah.
We won't turn that into a park lot.
I'm telling you, it's gonna happen, that's, I don't have it, but there'll be a conversation.
So it's, it's school property?
Yeah.
No. Softball field isn't school property, up to the back fence is school property.
Yeah.
And then the softball field is actually owned by the sensible family.
Who hasn't paid taxes, has they?
Correct.
Well, I'm just saying, all of a sudden, you're gonna get. Well, I'm just saying, all of a sudden, you're gonna get into a problem.
Yes.
Even if you can solve it, it under one group, you don't wanna have a perception of favoritism.
Yeah, and that's the thing, if they want us to come up with some equipment, we can do that, that's fine. I think what the group's gonna ask us next week is to simply, can we open the gate so they can spray it?
Like I said, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting helpful.
Yeah.
But I just think we have to be careful about.
Or can they do a lease, because I know they've done a one or two-year lease before in the past, as far as just using the field for practice.
Yeah.
Mostly.
And we've done stuff, I put electricity out there.
Yes.
I thought we put electricity out there so I got the kitchen machine.
We did, we put the electricity out there and they never used it.
I mean, the Ballon U Sports Association is not looking at using Indian field. It's a select baseball team. They got kicked off the high school team, off, off the high school field. Cause they didn't ask permission to use.
Cool, but that's wrong.
And so that, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
So.
They are protecting that field.
Yeah, they are protecting that field, because they put forty grand into it this year.
Correct.
And so, I mean, it's just one of those things that he didn't ask for, for permission, and got kicked off. And that's why I'm guessing that group is, all the parents are gonna come.
I, I think what you're seeing here is, we have a shortage of facilities for youth. We have a bunch of open spaces, but we have a shortage of facilities. If you look out in the flats, if you look out at where Indian field is, and I know that the gym puts the cock over there. We've got Strang Brothers putting some materials and some equipment across the street from Indian field. But we own, correct me if I'm wrong, see about ninety-five percent of all that out there, except for that little house in the middle, and maybe two or three houses off to the side. They wouldn't be the greatest of facilities, but at least you could, you could turn them into some practice.
Are there great sports camps out there?
There are. There are.
The problem is you could put it down there in the flats.
No, the problem is you have to involve an engineer. If you involve an engineer or an architect, the, the price of the.
Have to involve architect?
To get somebody's grant funds, yes. You can't, back of the napkin, or you're gonna get courted and do something on cat, it has to be a stamp.
I thought somebody was married to an architect, but I can't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who you're talking about.
Her stamp ran out.
Name's right there.
Yeah, so you decided not to refill her stamp?
Just kidding.
She, she's doing, she's doing just fine. But there are grants for things like that. I'm a firm believer that if you invest in youth sports, it's, you're, you'll get a payback, a monetary payback, and then you'll get another payback.
We've seen it, we've seen it from football, and we're seeing it from basketball.
Yep.
I mean, because I go to the basketball games, and I go to the restaurants backwards, and there are people from the basketball.
Oh, yeah, seventy or two ago, it was packed everywhere we went. But yeah, it's out there.
I don't know what our, our February was at our highs, a hundred, it was a hundred and sixty thousand. But typically, well, here's my bar, Phil King's pretty happy.
Well, the only way we could justify this is to grant funds, so, I mean, it's hard for us to.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I agree. If it, if it was us putting some equipment out there and laying some, some parts, some, some stuff off and putting water out. You know, if a group wanted to come in and put seed down and do some of the legwork, and it just took us to get the stuff ready. I think that's a level that we could probably help with, anything beyond that is gonna get. Will get tricky and icy.
Cause I mean, there's been a lot of engineering, like the field off the bell, up there, where we're supposed to softball, there's been a lot of engineering in that.
There was a whole lot of money spent there.
There's a whole lot of money spent there, but there's not a lot of architect and engineering.
Are you talking about stands, a concession stand, and lights, and the whole other, so that's, the light things where you.
The stands are.
Yeah.
Metal runs with, with just square thicken ceiling, you know, roofs, that's it. Someone could make a net.
Yeah, I think they ought to be blue. Don't get me started on how architects make money.
I don't know, it just seems to me to be something.
Well, I, I would expect us to, to get some requests in two weeks. We'll also have Dana Fullerton present on the twentieth as well, and so she'll take up the majority of the time. That's our auditor, and she has some recommendations for us, so.
Anything else? Want us to do a journey?
Sure.
Second. Oh, okay, say hi.
Say hi.